Two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Lewis and Clark County four commissioners. We always start this out with belligerent citizens or harmless. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the national republic for which it stands, one nation, united, peaceful, liberty and justice pro. It is really out there. I just. Okay, however, in the meantime, we've got to get that contract here. I am Kansas Payne. I am the chair of the county commission for the next. To me, the vice chair, Mr. Tom Rawl, taking control of this auspicious group. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Chairman.
To his left is Brandy Grandy. Notice I can remember her name. Good morning, Andy.
Morning.
And to her left is Jenny Chambers. Good morning, Jenny. Good morning. Who is head of planning and public works. And to my right, the honorable Mr. Andy Hunt House, who is longest-termed of our commissioners, so he knows. Well, sorry. To his left is J T Murray. Murphy, Murray. They change him out every once in a while. So, however, Roger Balls is our C A O. Same rank to P J from the county attorney's office. Good morning, Roger. There, I introduce everybody. We have a sign-in sheet right in the front there. And there's also agendas out there if you want to follow along the program. Um, now. Consent action items, three A, Roger.
Yes, Chairman. Yes, Chairman and Commissioner, this is on three A on your agenda. It's vendor claims report for the weekend in December twelve, two thousand twenty-five. Staff recommends approval of that item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions from the commission? Andy, seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I would entertain a motion.
Chairman, I would move to approve consent action item three eight. Vendor claims report for the weekend in December twelve, two thousand twenty-five.
Set. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the vendor claims report for the weekend in December twelve, twenty-five. Do you have any further comment, commissioners?
Just one, just one. I, as, as all these, the staff has provided these reported bill, we're paying for the, the, for the period. And we can play a time course to analyze and take a look at it and make sure it makes sense. They're always available, but immediately, this week, this week, I didn't have any question.
Okay, I don't think I do either. Maybe I'm, maybe they're understanding. But that's, that's a good point, Tom. It may look like we're just doing rote approval, but we really come, uh, reviewing this and we can take this serious. Okay, um, any more comment from the, from the commissioners? If there is none, then. Let's see. If you approve in second, yes. All right, on paper. Consent action item three A, any of you are saying aye? Aye. Move about all those who do not approve, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the action items, we have first, uh, action item four A agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Montana State University Extension. Alyssa Schmidt will be presenting this.
There. Good morning. Thank you for having me. Before you this morning is the Lewis and Clark County MSU extension agreement. The agreement consists of, I'm not just reading it for it. Foundational support for agents Sophia Fromm-Livers, part of Vol. agricultural agent, myself, Alyssa Schmidt. Four H, youth development agent, and Jane Worrery, family consumer sciences agent. Supplemental support for employee Chloe Lincoln with SNAP education. Administrative support and benefits for employee Leah Mendez. County funding for operations and capital. We've rated it in the amount of three hundred and three thousand dollars for eight hundred and sixty. Three hundred and three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Staff recommends the board of county commissioners approve the Lewis and Clark County and MSU extension agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, looking at the agreement that is attached to the memorandum. And it says that this agreement covers the period from July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. We're halfway through that period. Is there reasoning we're only now approving this?
No, this is just the timeframe that it takes to get everything to everyone.
So do you get paid for the first hour?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Andy, you got some?
Chairman. Just for people's education, you might be watching it here today. This is a longstanding agreement.
Right.
All, both counties have an agent and the university, Montana State. Um, and we share the responsibility of having an agent in our community. So MSU pays portion of the agents. The agents are employees of the university system.
Right.
MSU.
As well, are you? Yeah, we work for both of you.
Yes, yes, but they, yeah, you're in. And, uh, but we share that responsibility. We each put in, um, significant contribution to make sure the program always stand to agree to this on a regular basis. So I just wanted people to understand that. I don't know if you have anything to add.
No, you're absolutely correct. We are that handshake agreement from a hundred years ago. So thank you for supporting us, letting us support the community. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks.
Andy, any questions, Tom?
I might just, uh, ask for, for the plan, if you just kind of go through some of the programs that extension is involved in.
Sure.
I, you know, I grew up, I grew up thinking extension is four H, you know, and.
I think it is.
But, but there's so much more to it than, than, than four H.
Oh, yeah.
And it's been around a long time. I have noticed in some of the documents that, that one of the acts that created the extension goes back to two thousand, uh, nineteen fourteen or something like that. If you, if you just explain a few of the, of the things.
Yeah, and extension has evolved over time. You're right. Depending on what they need for the community, we are, I don't mean to give you a history lesson, but nineteen forty-eight was very significant in, in the world during World War Two. The extension agents would teach people how to garden, how they can, how to preserve their food. Victory Garden was very popular at the time. It's interesting to tell people out about that. And then as we moved into different seasons of the country and different seasons, people have, even after COVID, gardening has become very popular. I think three point three million people started gardening after COVID, and I don't really think anyone stopped. Keep running from the New York Times. Sophia is very busy when it comes to that. She's actually offering a master gardener program during the off season, during the winter time. She has a full list of people that want to learn how to garden, and she teaches classes right away to that. Jane Worrery, too, is actually teaching a class right now for strong people. That's the class that she offers for free for people in the community to stay strong as they are in the retirement side of their lives. Anybody can participate, but that tends to be her demographic that supports her. I think she has about thirty people that come every Tuesday, Thursday. I too love four H. So we, we do quality assurance courses with kids, which we partner with various services in the community to teach the kids how to do basic first aid for animals that they find that could be injured. We have everything from welding classes to gardening classes to weed management classes to carpentry to small engine repair. On the livestock side, we have slime, rabbits, pigs, deer, dairy, goats, poultry, all sorts of different animals that we teach. We have five hundred members that are currently enrolled, four hundred students. Yeah, that's lovely. So we have a strong, strong support network for our volunteers as well, if you remember. We actually just taught a livestock feeding class this week as well, which is a cross between outdoor chess with animals and debate. So it's a really interesting course. Martine came over from Sweetgrass County. His kids went to Nashville for four H for livestock studying. They've been very well. So he's getting to the course this week. So, yeah, we do offer it at the base, but it's.
What other follow-up? I might, I think we have accounted the volunteers that help support some of these programs.
Oh, yes, we have a hundred and four.
Hundred and four volunteers helping.
Yeah, so it's, it's a wonderful program and the dedication is unbelievable. I've mentioned Karen Hamill, and she's been volunteering for fifty-six years. She was featured in Lives and Manscapes through MSU. I helped write a piece on her. It'll be out this month. As on average, we have volunteers that have volunteered for twenty, thirty years, forty-six years. Not, um, to have a couple that volunteer together at the kind of date night to have some time together. So it's really fantastic to see. It's an honor. I really think.
Or if I might just add, if people want to get connected with you.
Yeah.
You're easily connected through the internet or the phone, but
A lot of people just stop by.
Want to make a face-to-face connection. Your offices are, uh, right next to their offices.
We're at the fairgrounds. I would say that they're sweet F for fairgrounds. We're sweet E for extension. I made it up, but people tend to remember now that you're here. Yes, we have a gal already who's named, she was a judge for us last year. And, um, she went where she saw the fair and offered to volunteer and now she's helping us with our K D program. Um, our preserves, cooking, baking. She has sixty-five members that are in her forces.
So they come in the front entrance today of, of the fairgrounds and you are run to the, to the left of the, of the big event building.
Where?
And, and, and so you're kind of on the west end of, underneath the west end of the rodeo.
Absolutely. The rodeo is my back house. So that is over and out with those. But, yeah, anyone can opt in volunteering. Um, they do have to go through a volunteer training. They also have to do background checks and have an interview with me. And then we move forward, go to what areas of expertise that they might be able to support. They start out as a co-supervisor attendant, learning the ropes, and then they can take on a superintendent. So you can volunteer anytime you have, if you have time. Or be a guest speaker for citizenship.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Anything else? Uh, there. Anything here? Oh, I gotta do public. Serious public comment. We can public comment about hopefully ten or more of this. Okay, public comment now. Grant function.
Chairman, I approve the agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Montana State for the extension as presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the this agreement between Montana State University Extension and Lewis and Clark County as presented by. Yep. Um, is there any further comment from the commission?
Just continue, continue on, whether the fourth, the fourth agent, Anne's heart health. When? And.
Yeah, heart. Okay. No further comment. Uh, it has been moved and seconded that we approve this agreement. Both favor, if I say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. E, I have four P on our agenda. Grant award amendment to Lewis and Clark Public Health from the Montana Department of Health and Human Services, as explained by our friend Sarah Sandow. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Sarah Sandow, the grant specialist at Lewis and Clark Public Health. Today I have before you a grant award amendment from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services for their Helping Montana Families Program for the amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. The grant period is from September thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-five through September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six. This funding covers our Nurse Family Partnership Program and our Parents and Teachers Program and within fiscal year twenty-six budget. The Nurse Family Partnership Program provides a personal nurse for women who qualify to provide advice and information during pregnancy and up until the child is two years of age. Parents and teachers provide the parent educator for families prenatally till the child is in kindergarten. Parents and teachers emphasize education on the child's development, family well-being, and school readiness. Both of these home visiting programs help build skills and tools for new parents in Lewis and Clark County area. We are funded to serve forty-three families per year, and we are currently full. With our Nurse Family Partnership Program, we need a designated nurse supervisor whose time is specific to this program to provide guidance to our nurse home visitor. They are able to serve one supervisor per eight nurse home visitors. We have historically partnered with Missoula Health Department to offer that service to provide cost savings by paying them through this task order. Missoula is able to continue to provide that service for the first quarter while we finalize a new contract with Riverstone Billings. Since there are now less home visitors statewide, we are going to move forward with buildings providing our supervision for this program for the entire state, which will create even more cost savings both for Lewis and Clark and the other side of the state as well. So at a later date this month, I will be returning with two contracts for your consideration, both the one with Missoula for the first quarter as well as quarters two through four of Riverstone as well. Those will both becoming ones for finalizing with legal and financial partners. Staff recommends approval, and I answer questions.
Chairman.
Uh, yes, Tom, you got a comment.
I, I just, here we've got another wonderful service that reaches a lot of people. How many, can you give us an idea how many, uh, people are being, uh, touched and, and by this, by the programs we're talking about there?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Rawl. We serve forty-three families per year through these two home visiting programs.
Um, I'm wondering why is it we're changing from the Missoula Health Department to contract with Riverstone Billings?
Great question, Commissioner Payne. Previously, there was too many nurse home visitors to only go through one site for a nurse supervisor. So we went with Missoula because they had a few nurses and we have one nurse, and so we have one home visitor that would supervise those two sites, where Riverstone had enough nurses on their site that they supervised their own. Um, Missoula has decided not to hire one of them as a supervisor, so that not, we hired not one nurse supervisor, or nurse, home visitor, sorry. Uh, we now, we're in that eight allowable per model fidelity. So now we can just have one nurse supervisor for the entire state. And so through conversation with Missoula and Billings, we decided that it made more sense for the structure to go through Billings since they have the most home visitors there. Um, so through conversation with both Missoula and Billings, it was decided that it will switch over to Billings. Even Missoula will be supervised by Billings moving forward.
Uh, thank you. Thank you. Andy, do you have anything to say? Any comments?
I can, Chairman, maybe just the opportunity to explain, uh, we have home visiting parents here and does the work in our community and the neighborhood. But this supervision for that person will just be with that for this quarter. And it's, it's been a common practice. Uh, we've made this contract many times, uh, Missoula, we're switching. So it's not overly complicated or out of line, and it's been a best practice, normal practice. And this will allow statewide to consolidate a level of supervising entity, so they're wanting to educate and actually, I mean, on the ground, yeah, to do this. Sir, man.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Commissioner Hunt House. We have our home visiting supervisor, actually, the audience, Mary Farah. So she is the local supervisor for the whole home visiting team, provides that day-to-day support for both our home visitors and the families of fakers. Um, through the model fidelity, our Marissa is our nurse home visitor. We need that specific nurse supervisor who has spent a good portion of their time just in this one model and been trained in that as their whole function. So rather than employing that nurse supervisor here, which we would have to then hire a full nurse supervisor in this one model, we've always partnered with Missoula to make sure that, um, that nurse supervisor can supervise more than just one person. Um, and that will go well with Missoula previously. And so, yeah, since we have that fewer amount now, we're going to go with Billings so that now people are able to save money both we will, Missoula and, and all three of us. So we might as well as the state because of the amount of licensing. So it's the savings all across the board.
Now, hey, another question. Why are there less home visitors statewide? Is that like you did issue of, oh, issue of?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Payne. I'll answer, and then I will get ready to make sure that I didn't miss anything important. So locally, we did, we used to actually even have more nurse home visitors. We switched from, I don't know if you all remember, it was years ago, we switched from having a nurse home visitor. We switched one of our staff to actually a parent's teachers home visitor instead. We found nurses are really expensive because of their experience, because of their licensing, um, and well, it's hard to hire because we aren't necessarily able to pay as well as a hospital. Um, so we found that both programs are incredibly beneficial for our community. And so we had a cost savings more able to hire differently and a little bit easier when we switched to our um, Parents and Teachers Program. So that's why we switched one person over from that. Missoula had tried to fill a condition for two years um, for one of their nurses and were really struggling that they couldn't. So that is why they didn't, um, they looked in as well.
Thank you. And she would ask of this, your, yeah.
Answer it. Thank you.
Well, she could come up, introduce herself, and so we would recognize her face and have a name to go away from.
Morning. I'm Mary Spark. I'm the town health supervisor for Lewis and Clark County.
I knew she looked familiar.
Okay, thank you. And she's, and Sarah, right, it's, the Nurse Family Partnership is a very valuable program for the community, but it's, it's hard to maintain nurses at the level that we pay at the county, the council level. Um, those hospitals can pay much more. Um, it's hard, it's very hard to hire nurses right now.
Does, does every county have a program like this?
No, actually, it's only the three communities and more that have Nurse Family Partnerships. Helena, Missoula, and Illinois. It used to, there used to be a program in U and in Haver, and they all tend to ask those programs to get ordered.
What thing? Please, what a question.
What I might, might ask, I, I see from your notes that you're currently full. Um, if we could find the funding, uh, what, but how many more people do you think would be benefited by it? We could expand the program.
So both Parents and Teachers and Nurse Family Partnership are, um, funded federally and through the state. And then they, um, give us that contract based on those caseload numbers. So another, if we were able to, um, fund like another nurse, uh, we could potentially serve another twenty, twenty-two-ish, um, with pregnant women with that program. That, uh, you can't go over a certain number of families, uh, or a certain number of pregnant women with that program to, to continue in that model fidelity.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Um, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I would entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the grant award amendment to Lewis and Clark Public Health from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services, as explained by Sarah Sandow. Second.
And moved and seconded that we approve this grant award amendment to Lewis and Clark Public Health from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services, as explained by Sarah Sandow. Uh, is there any further comment from the, uh, commission? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the grant award amendment are indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Any? No, is there anybody out there who's not going to approve this, indicated by saying? Motion passes. Three, none. Well, I would say. Third, on our agenda today is the grant application to the Department of Agriculture, Noxious Weed Trust, and it's presented by our Christian Lerner.
Good morning, Chair, morning, commissioners. I'm Christian Lerner, Lewis and Clark County Noxious Weed Supervisor. Before you this morning is a grant through the Montana Department of Agriculture. The purpose of this grant is to provide funding, support for Lewis and Clark County Noxious Weed District. These funds will educate with, assist with education, pardon, invasive weed management, equipment purchases, and other related activities. These funds will come from the Noxious Weed Trust administered by the Montana Department of Agriculture. Through the legislative process, funds are allocated to the counties and reservations through the Department of Agriculture. Has funded this grant for roughly thirty years or more. Um, and the county has been an active participant for many of those years. If awarded, the grant will provide seventy-five hundred for the Noxious Weed District operations. This, the grant does not require a local match. Ones must be exclusively used for Noxious Weed control and management activities. Typically, these dollars are received in March or April after application is submitted. Staff recommends approval of this grant.
Thank you, Christian. Uh, any questions, commission? Andy? Seeing no questions. Is there any public comment? No public comment. Uh, well, I would entertain a motion.
Chairman, we approve the grant application to Montana Department of Agriculture Noxious Weed Trust as presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve a grant application, uh, through the Montana Department of Agriculture Noxious. Is there any further comment from?
Just, uh, one, I, I've been sitting this lap here on the Noxious Weed Board. Really impressed with the dedication of the folks who come in all over the county once a month at least to, to, uh, uh, help direct the activities and, and the work here. You know, how much territory you cover. So thank you for what you're doing. It, uh, kind of helps, a few little items like this help supplement our budget. Help us get a little further, and in a few more weeks, not bad. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I sat on this for, before Tony did, and I, it certainly made me more aware. Everywhere I look, God's lockdown, and just, and it, it was such an informative experience, so. Thank you, and I hope you all will put me back on that for, for, yeah, coming here. Andy, do you have anything you can say?
Chairman, there's nothing left to say.
We said all. Uh, let's see. You did the diary.
You did.
We did. We did.
I don't think we've done the most.
We did, yeah, we did a motion. Uh, and there's been comment from these two there here, I mean, generally, and with that. See, let's, uh, the move is seconded that we approve grant application to the Montana Department of Agriculture Noxious Weed Trust, as explained by Christian Lerner. All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Christian. Next on our agenda. I approve the professional services contract between Lewis and Clark County, Great West Engineering, as presented by Will Kings, Dan Carl.
Good morning, Chairman and commissioners. The director, Dan Carl, county engineer.
In December of twenty twenty three, Public Works advertised a request for proposals to design improvements to Wake Hill and Unravel. Project will start at Veal Lane, continue past Lincoln Road to begin the existing asphalt pavement. The request outlined a multi-phased approach to the design with phase one consisting of a thirty percent corridor design, determination of additional easements necessary in a complete drainage assessment. The original phase one contract has expired with the budget remaining and tasks still not completed. However, additional time is needed to complete the phase one scope of services due to complexities in the drainage assessments and the appropriate assessment of rideaway impacts. Before you today is a contract with Great West Engineering to complete the remaining phase one scope of services for the eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy eight dollar balance of the original budget. Staff recommends the approval of the professional services contract with Great West Engineering Incorporated for eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy eight dollars. I'm surprised the chair to slide behind you.
Thank you, Dan. Any question from the commission?
Chair Pena, Mr. Carl, just I'm curious, um, the complexity, just a little bit about the project and where we're um, I'm sure driving at a pop. Sure, any spots with uh, interesting activation? The rideaway, I'm sure it's drainage issues, there's how the blow or pretty steep climate, so just curious about, I'm guessing, about the challenging parts of this road. Tell us about it.
Absolutely, Chair Pena Commissioner Hunthausen. So there are, it was, we got through a good preliminary design, the corridor plan, which is a three dimensional model built off of, you know, the the land out there. And the initial plan was to see where those overlapped with properties, right? Uh, and then it was my responsibility to go and meet with all of those landowners to determine whether or not they were agreeable moving forward with it, kind of as it was laid out with that general footprint. That process took a lot longer than I anticipated, uh, which put our consultant in a little bit of a bind on time. Um, also within that, we decided that the acquisition element of the project, we tried to put that with the consultant. That process took a little bit longer and we kind of come to the conclusion that we want to do a separate contract rather than amendment onto the original contract, which is why we're here with that sentence expired. So, um, as you stated, there are a lot of locations where it's a little narrow, there's a very high bank on the east side of the road, right hand side of you heading for. And also some pretty steep slopes on the left hand side for the lake. So there are a lot of design intricacies that we were working through with the consultant and also the landowners on what they'd be agreeable to. There's irrigation channels in the area that we had to work out which ones would be allowed to be built into place or moved, uh, which ones could be just abandoned entirely, uh, as well as road intersections. Complications.
Two. Andy?
Yeah, and part of the question is here from public where I do as much as people can every launch catch just paid that. It's more complicated than than you think and it's probably going to be a little bit expensive, got some guard rail, widen, acquisition, that way, drainage issues. Um, and likely a all key million dollar project. Yes, I mean, we don't know yet the way he was this whole process we're going through to have a consultant tell us about the best design and with all the considerations and then guess the page. That might possibly, we want to be ready for that one shot for funding out there. Uh, so I guess just speak to that a little bit. I just want people to understand that we're we're doing our best to try and, we'd like this to be a section road through that meets all the criteria for that in terms of number trips per day and all of that, but it's not as easy as going out there and going down some pay stuff.
Absolutely, Chair Pena Commissioner Hunthausen. So, uh, this contract is the complete paid thirty percent design plan, which gives us a pretty accurate with contingency uh estimate in twenty twenty five dollars per sit and about six million dollars for that stretch. A piece of that is because, as you mentioned, our annual daily traffic is decently high. Uh, we need to widen this road out to meet our our typical section three requirements. So we're getting a little wider with the paved surface, uh, which is, which is a good thing, but it does cost more and it has more impacts outside of our normal sixty foot easel. So that's a big piece of the 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 cost and the time and the effort. Uh, we're actively looking for ways on the construction of this. Uh, six million dollars is a pretty decent price tag. One way we're doing that is we're going to pay the construction, at least that's our intention, as well as going after as many grants as we possibly find and identify that would apply to this work. Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
If I might did, I mean, if I if I understand the project right, we've got a pretty good hillside or mudside, we're gonna have to dig into that to get the width, the technique to make it safe, safe enough. And on the, on the downhill side, there's the places where cars have been sliding off in people's backyard. We need to put the the guardrail that that to the cost of the of the project. Those are two that we can. Now, the, if I if I read this right, we it starts at the intersection of Veal Lane, which is the road that that leaves, um, the road leave, leaves the roadway road there uh, to go up to our ramp. And how, what's the north end there? I can see, is it right at the causeway there?
Uh, Chair Pena Commissioner Rock, so the north and our our intention is to go all the way to Lincoln Road, to Lincoln Road, to that actually where the intersection is, Lincoln Road and okay.
While I know it's a lot more more complex than it looks, a lot more expensive than it looks, appreciate your diligence, looking for answers and getting ready to try to get the thing properly. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Tom. So this is phase one. Do you have what, where where is phase two, Sarah? I suppose looking for the money?
Uh, Chair Pena Commissioners, yes, so we'll identify kind of uh, the section based on our preliminary estimates of what we're going to do a final relying on, and then we'll finish that section. Uh, in addition, we'd really like to get all the land acquisition completed next, so that doesn't become a kind of a stumbling block or hindrance to future phases. So once we've got the thirty percent, we wanted to go the land and wire and then we'll get the the final design of first chunk of construction, which right now we anticipate to be the first file or so. That's the 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 least complex of it, and then we'll move into the next two sections is how we have it kind of split out, right?
This is not going to happen immediately, but as usual, we'll in our Public Works Department plan things out as far as they can. That's good day. So thank you, Dan. Okay. Um, is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, um, I would entertain a motion.
Chair Pena, I move to approve the professional services contract with Lewis and Clark County and Great West Engineering as planned by Dan Carl.
So it moved and seconded that we approve this contract. There any further comment from the commission? Seeing no further comment, um, it has been moved and seconded that we approve this professional services contract with Lewis and Clark County and Great West. Is there a further comment? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Well, that's it, folks. It has come to time when we ask for public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda above. And look, we have a public commenter. And I hope she understands that this is a one way conversation, really can. And so, by all means, good morning, Chair Pena Commissioners. My name is Colleen Rivers and Program Director of Public Surgery. I am grateful for the opportunity to speak the brand today today. This will not be the last thing that you've seen. The one way conversation works perfectly because I would just like to sort of be present and give updates as I have. Uh, as I mentioned last, we we are losing our current funding projected January thirty first, moving this. There are a lot of pieces to figure out. But I plan on returning with updates as we figure things out. I'm curious, um, there aren't really very many nonprofits around that have baskets of money and want to pick up the shelter as a program. But I am curious if I were to come to one of these nonprofits with our own basket of money and say, will this buy us six months? Can you take this on just so that we don't close? We'll get our own nonprofits that at the meantime. Um, so I just am very grateful for the opportunity. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Is there any further public comment? Seeing no further public comment, this meeting is adjourned.